2019 is officially called to order. At this time, we will be led in the pledge of allegiance by our superintendent, Dr. Rick Cericy, and the invocation by Reverend Dan Phillips in that order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we are assembled here this afternoon, and we want to remember, Father, that even though this is summer break, there are some of our students that have tremendous challenges.
Yes.
Father, I thank you for a school board. Thank you for a school association, a district, that has done the very best that they can to equip teachers, to work with our students, to guide them, to teach them, to prepare them for the challenges that lie ahead.
Yes, God.
Father, guide this school board as they go into deliberation today. Help them, Father, to remember that the lives that they are touching are people, young people.
Yes.
People made out of your image, people that need to know how to do what is required of them.
Yes.
And that they've been prepared to do so. So, Father, we thank you for this time, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend.
Beautiful.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, when you get to that part...
As we prepare ourselves for the presentation, if there are any of you here or any one of you that would like to address the board by way of public comments, we ask that you would get one of the public comment cards, fill it out, and get it in to my right, Mrs. Sharon Carmaney, and we will take care of that. All right, at this time, our agenda calls for the recognition of Palatka Young Professionals. Ms. Dr. Cericy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think a lot of us don't qualify for the Palatka Young Professionals because of the virtue of our age, but we're with you in heart. But I do want to recognize, on behalf of the school district and the school board, the tremendous effort that our Palatka Young Professionals... And I don't even think you've been created an entire year yet, have you?
One year.
One year?
Awesome.
But you all have done what is probably the equivalent of the Manhattan Project and D-Day and all the above.
Yeah.
In a matter of a hundred and some odd days, you pulled off really the impossible, and that is pull off the organize and implement the Blue Crab Festival. And I was asked, I think Jane asked me earlier, what does that have to do with our students? Well, it's got everything to do with our students, because we are... Maybe it wasn't you, somebody else asked me.
It was Jane.
Sorry, didn't mean to misquote you.
Hey, Jane said she...
I heard her.
I always blame everything on Jane, but I'm sorry.
David.
Someone asked me, what does that have to do with the school district? And I just want to say, the school district is a partner with you, as many other organizations, but we are so proud that you are out there, especially representing many of you being former students of the Putnam County School District, you really make us proud, and you represent the next generation that's going to move our community to a place where we haven't been in a long time, maybe never. So, we are in your hands. We're glad you're here to kind of help us run the show when we go off into the sunset, and very proud of that. And I would like to hear, maybe one of your representatives come up and just explain, just give us a quick version of what you did and how you pulled it off, and then I have a presentation to make. David, is that you, or whoever?
That's why he's got a suit on.
Try to look nice.
You do, you do.
Thank you.
You pulled it off.
That was how you did it.
Well, first, we definitely want to thank all our sponsors, the Beck Auto Group, Futch's, Tractor Depot, and Boat Depot. They were our major sponsors for the event, and without them, you know, we wouldn't have been able to fund it as a whole. Continental Building Supplies and then Seminole, they were both very big supporters, so just having the support from those, the financial support from those places was a huge help. And then just having, you know, our group, we each kind of took a section and ran with it. It may not be something that any of us were familiar with at all whatsoever, and then we didn't get a ton of direction from past help. So, we were able to, you know, just to reach out to what we knew, a lot of things needed to be updated. There's a different way to do things, and that's our thought on a lot of what we're doing, is doing things a little different, trying to get, you know, our group as a whole, we're just, we're wanting to have programming downtown to get people downtown, and that's what, you know, there are businesses there, and that's what people don't realize is if they're not going down there. So, having events and just drawing the people there to see what's there.
Could I ask you to introduce each of your members that are here, and please ask them to come up front?
Start with you.
And we want to take a photo, and I believe might even have...
I want to say something real quickly before y'all start.
Then I'll take a picture when they get up here.
I am really encouraged, I thought it was the best Blue Crab Festival I've ever been to, and I've been to a lot of them.
Thank you.
I enjoyed being there, I enjoyed volunteering, I just don't know how it could have been any better. I am looking forward to, and this will show you that I was not the one that asked, what did this have to do with students?
Sorry, Jane.
But I'm looking forward to you having a continuing partnership with the Putnam County School District as mentors and role models, because you all are, and I'm just thrilled about this organization.
Thank you. We are, that was one big thought, you know, a couple different times where we thought, you know, what if we did this, it would involve the school district, but in a short amount of time, it just didn't make a lot of sense. Seth Miles is our marketing director, and he had a lot of good ideas of involving the students, you know, you have the license plate art contest, and just having, you know, possibly something to do with, you know, a T-shirt, or something that we could do that could be a fundraiser, you know, for the school district as a whole. So, we definitely, that's, you know, one of our big things is, you know, recruiting the young people to keep them, you know, involved in the community, and then, you know, retaining them to stay here. And that's what, you know, all of us, we're here, we're back, you know, so we may have graduated with our, you know, degrees beyond what we got here, but, you know, we're here, and it's our community, so we want to be involved in that.
Could you introduce each one of them, have them come up, and we definitely want to recognize you, and I'm going to present something.
Sure. We'll start at the end with Matt, it's Matt Buckles, he coordinated all the music, and it was, it was one of the best parts.
The only thing is that he didn't perform. And he got us a truck for the parade.
He emceed for us. He emceed for us.
I would like to thank the board for their patience with putting up with my father.
Probably somebody rapping nice.
Next, we have Erin...
I resemble that remark.
Hughes. She did all, coordinated all of our arts and crafts vendors, so she dealt with the 120 people that we have, and I don't envy her job at all. Laura Parsons, she did our T-shirts and...
Which ran out.
Which ran out quickly.
I got my volunteer one.
Seth Miles, he was our marketing director, and he definitely got, you know, we had, as the carnival guy told us, we drew a completely different crowd from what he's normally used to, so that's definitely all Seth. And then we had Lera and Dylan Wallace, sorry. Lera helped us, you know, across the board as a whole. She was there with Seth on the marketing team, she helped me and Katie when we needed help, and they were both just, you know, a big hand to...
Come on.
Thank you. You did some.
I can't believe Lera's old enough to be a young professional. She was just a little darling redheaded baby not too long ago.
Yeah, that brownie kid.
Brenna, are you going to come with us?
She was my girl.
Of course.
I see some, I see some people over there where she got her red hair, too.
Brenna, and then Brenna Miles, she helped volunteer a lot on the weekend, and then that's Seth's wife, so she put up with all the hours that he put into it, so.
Did you introduce yourself?
That's everybody. I'm David Parsons, I'm the treasurer for the Palatka Young Professionals, and I worked on the business and general coordination of the event. Katie Long was our chair, and I was the co-chair, so next year, I'll be the chair, and Seth Miles will actually be my co-chair, so we're going to keep it rotating.
And I believe, if I'm mistaken, say Charlie's involved in the Young Professionals, too?
Charlie is.
I played a very small role getting the helicopter guy. So, I hope somebody got to take a ride on a helicopter.
I didn't, took the media bag.
On behalf of the superintendent and the school board of Putnam County, I want to express our appreciation for what y'all have done in a short amount of time, and what you've done for the city of Palatka and Putnam County, and we just really enjoy being a partner of yours for many years to come, so.
Yes.
Just a certificate of appreciation certifies, the certificate is awarded to the Palatka Young Professionals in appreciation for your outstanding organization, coordination of planning efforts to keeping a longstanding 30-year tradition alive in downtown Palatka. Congratulations on the successful completion of the 2019 Blue Crab Festival.
John, you were quite involved in this as well, weren't you? We appreciate all your efforts to get it in the paper as much as it was. Yeah, I mean, John should be recognized.
I can't believe Brenna did anything. Brenna never has done anything.
All right, if everybody will look this way, one, two, three.
One, two, three. Make sure I get some of that.
You can go with him, and I'll pick you up if you want to, or you can stay and watch, whatever you want to do.
Ms. Carmaney, okay, all right, having no request to make comments to the board, we will move now into our consent agenda by the school board and the superintendent. We will start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
I don't have anything to pull. Mr. Buckles?
Nothing.
Mrs. Crawford?
E-12.
Hold on. I just want Rhonda to put that in Jane language for me, please.
Budget amendments, I guess.
Okay. Mr. McInnis?
None.
Okay, and I have none.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus E-12.
Can I interject before you finish the motion?
Sorry.
We pulled F-1...
Oh, I forgot to mention.
From consideration, just wanted to make sure.
Right. Thanks for letting us know.
Thank you, I was supposed to mention that.
Starting right, I was going to make sure you knew that was correct.
The code of conduct, we did pull it, yes. Now, Mrs. Crawford.
Can we say again?
Yes.
Reword your motion, please.
Reword it, or just repeat it?
Well, to where you say that you got, we pulled item F-1.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I would like to approve the consent agenda minus E-12, and what was the other one?
F-1.
F-1, which had already been pulled, yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mrs. Crawford that we approve the consent agenda minus E-12 and F-1, which had been pulled, and it's properly seconded by Mr. McInnis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposers?
Hearing none.
Motion carries five one. Okay, we're ready. Rhonda, if you don't mind, just briefly explain the...
Okay, you have before you the budget amendments for April of 2019, and the two big budget amendments throughout the year are the ones that come usually in December and the one that comes in April, and that is the third and fourth calculation of the FEFP. The biggest change came in the December budget amendments, and that was with the third count, because we were down over 100 students.
Right.
And for the February count, that we didn't receive the information until April, when they reduced our funds, we were down another 15 students over what we were down in October count. That's probably pretty normal, you know, in that second semester, we always have a few students that leave for varying reasons. As far as the general fund goes, I'll talk briefly about the other things that are not FEFP-related. We received a Connect 10 award that was $1,700. We received a donation from Mosh for a regional STEM hub for $5,000. We had our normal transfer of charter school capital outlay dollars that we bring into the general fund to pay out to the charters, that was $26,479, and I'll jump down to the bottom. We brought in some of the energy retrofit loan into revenue so that it could be spent. And then the culmination of all the FEFP cuts had a net effect of a negative $14,420. We had some categoricals that went up, like the virtual ed went up by $4,000. Our student transportation categorical went up $21,442. I don't know if that was a net effect of a correction done, or something like that, on bus rider ships, and we received an additional allocation. If there's extra funds by the end of the year, they prorate it out to the school districts, so we received an extra allocation of $13,410. And then various categoricals were reduced due to, they're based on student counts or something along those lines, so we had an overall net effect of a negative $14,420 that had to come from fund balance. And, of course, the additional allocation we received helped offset some of that, and we had to then go into the different pots of money that I still had left over set aside. So, the decrease in FTE overall for those students was $40,142 that we were down in revenue and fund balance. We received a decrease in SEI funds, and those funds are just, they go into the fund balance when we receive the money and everything, so we had to lower fund balance there. Decrease in lottery funds, those funds also go into fund balance. And we got even more McCay that we had to take away from our revenue, and I had already used that whole pot of McCay that I had set aside back in December. We used even more than I had, that I had set aside, so that was another $4,570. So, what it all culminates down to is that, once we had all these net effects, I still have one little pot in unreserved fund balance for reserve for FEFP proration cuts. Used all the other different things we had set aside, like the reserve for McCay, reserve for audit, FTE audit, reserve for FTE shortfall, so all of those were totally used up, and I've got $118,4137 left in reserve for FEFP cuts. There should not be any more of those unless in the very final, I see no reason for them taking it more unless they run out of money and they prorate us again in a negative direction this time. So, we're left with the 3% mandated fund balance. We still have the $100,000 that was a reserve for the Guardian program. We still have the $1.5 million, $1,592,90987 in unreserved fund balance, and that $118,000 that I was talking about that's still left in the reserve for FEFP proration for a total fund balance of $4,770,78340. In the capital project funds, all we had is the charter school outlay dollars being brought in, and then transferred out to general fund. In school food service, there was no changes in revenue, and just various changes that they moved around in objects, to the objects that they needed for spending, but they also had a reduction in fund balance of $1,366,000, excuse me, and that's just money that Nikki and them moved out of their unreserved fund balance to put into projects that they're doing over the summer.
Okay.
As you'll recall, they've been steadily asked by the AG office to lower their fund balance and everything.
Right.
So, they're working hard to do things in the schools to bring that fund balance down. Then in the special revenue fund, we did have an increase of revenue of $382,212, and we received the 21st Century Community Learning Center statewide, that was $170,000. Then everything else was roll forward certifications. And in the Nefect Internal Services and Enterprise Funds, there was no change in revenue or fund balance, but they made various budget changes to appropriate objects that they needed for spending.
Rhonda, I listened to Bud ask a question just then, or interject, that how did food service get to that kind of money? Being a Title I school district, it makes a lot of difference in the money that we receive for, and we get much more than we would for kids paying for lunch.
Right.
And we're feeding, we're going to be feeding, we fed 32,000 meals last summer, I bet you it'll probably surpass that this summer.
Well, we also implement the breakfasts in the classroom.
That's right, that brings an additional fund.
To make sure these kids get something to eat.
So, you know, it's way more involved than people can imagine, but...
It is, yes, and they've been working hard to get it within, you know, in the right area that the AG and the Department of Ag wants the fund balance to be, so it's a good problem to have, to have too much fund balance.
Well, thank you so much for all your little pots of reserved money.
Trying to do it again this year.
When we need to, thank you, Rhonda. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we accept E-12.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mrs. Jane Crawford that we accept E-12, and second by Mr. David Buckles. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none. Motion carries five zero. At this time, we are now...
Thank you.
Into emergency session. All right, and we have one item before us, stipends for employees attending the youth mental health first aid training, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommendation.
I'll second. Go ahead. All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. David Buckles that we accept this recommendation, and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposers? Hearing none. Motion carries five zero. We are now back in regular session. We have no unfinished business to discuss under new business, selection of a board member to serve as a representative and an alternate to serve on the Florida School Board Association Legislative Committee.
I'd like to nominate David Buckles to be the representative.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other nominations? Well, we got to vote for it.
Separately.
Any other nominations? Are hearing none?
Holly will do a good job.
All right, Mr. Buckles is officially in without even having to vote, and if we heard none. All right, you're in.
All right.
All right, now, we need an alternate?
Well, listen, I haven't told Sharon that I would go yet. Is it too late to get a room at the Hyatt? It is too late?
Yes, it is.
Is there a spillover motel?
There is a spillover motel. I'll have to, I'll have to find out if I can even do a registration.
Check and see.
They closed on the 25th or the 28th.
Because what you may have to do is ride down there for your meeting.
I know.
And then...
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, all right, our floor is open for the nomination of an alternate.
I, listen, listen, I would, I would like to have an alternate in case I can't make a meeting. I'm on the phone, like the superintendent, we talk to people, the same people, and he'll tell them one thing, I'll tell them another, and we play good cop, bad cop, and you know how it goes, but I'd like to nominate Holly Pickens as an alternate.
I second that.
All right, floor is still open for nominations, hearing none.
Quickly.
It looked like Mrs. Pickens will serve as our alternate for the school board legislative committee.
Wonderful. Boy, that...
Thank you, Holly.
All right. I love it when a plan comes together.
Yeah.
She will, she will know many of the same lobbyists through association that we will know.
All righty.
And by the way, Ms. Crawford's related to one of our representatives, so our senators.
Two.
Two, Erin and Robin.
And you'll give them a call prior to them going.
Anything y'all want.
Anything you want.
Just so it's nice.
The governor will sign, yeah.
Okay, at this time, we will have our board reports. We will start with you, Mrs. Crawford, and move to your left.
Okay, I don't have a whole lot, except I just wanted to comment on all the graduations. I think I went to six or seven, and they were all special in their own way. I love the traditions that each high school has started, you know, have had for years and continue to honor those traditions. I think they all went off without a hitch. There were a couple of girls in five-inch heels that did the wobble and fell, but other than that, they were all beautiful. The speeches were wonderful, the kids were excited. I came down for Deborah Shepherd's retirement party, such a valued employee for so many years, and such a big help to everyone that whoever needed her for retirement, or just to find out information, we're truly going to miss her. And then the last thing, I have heard so many positive comments about products of Putnam, and, you know, have heard more questions than I knew answers to about the role that they will play. You know, I told them, one of the things that I remembered you talking about was that maybe they could go into our schools and mentor and talk to the kids about their field of expertise, and so I hope that's something that will continue every year.
Yeah, that's what our purpose is.
And Karen could tutor in math.
Yeah, she could. She certainly could. If she wants to sign up for that.
Thank you, Mrs. Crawford. Mr. McInnis?
Okay, I like what Ms. Crawford just said about the graduations, the last two weeks have been jam-packed, and I just felt bad missing some of the things that were on the same time, same timeframe, but that's just what happens in May, and the graduations were beautiful. I had the opportunity to speak at the baccalaureate at IHS, and it was really special to me, because that was the class that I, was my final internship, so I knew a lot of them by their first name, and at the graduation, too, I got to help them down the stairs, so.
And you did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
I was so impressed.
Thank you. I really enjoyed the pre-K promotions, I think, I, I don't know, there's just something that touches my heart with pre-K and kindergarten, I think that was just...
They were precious.
And we, I enjoyed being in the parade with fellow board members, the Memorial Day.
That was fun.
Yep, and the celebration that...
Matt.
I'm going to get an automatic tailgate next time so I can floor it and throw everybody out the back of the truck, and I won't... But I just want to share, too, it's like the graduation moments in the county, I shared that with Rick, and I know we've gotten some compliments from various people, but it was mentioned at my church, and it was just, it was a praise report about how everybody's really proud about all the honors and the successes of all the students, and I just, it makes me feel proud, and when I hear it in my church, it's just even more. And people are taking interest in what's going on in the county. You can see it with the young professionals, and I can't wait to see what they do in a year, if they can do that in the little time that they did, look out. And the product of Putnam, I want to congratulate all the people that were honored as a product of Putnam. I had the opportunity to meet one man in Crescent City High School, and I came to find out as we were talking, everybody was getting ready when y'all were in the media center, and found out that he was related to one of our former classmates, Roger Niles.
Really?
Yeah.
Which one? Not the one that made the speech?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I already forgot his name now.
DJ Johnson?
And...
It was DJ Johnson?
No.
No.
No, he was actually, I'm sorry, I missed you.
He was one reunion.
He was a reunion person.
That's 69.
Judy Niles was...
Judy Peacock was a Judy Niles. And yesterday, I attended a teacher leadership showcase, and I was impressed, thoroughly impressed. It was some of the presentations, just eye-openers, and we have some really go-getters in our district, and when they come back and present it to the board, you'll be in awe.
Looking forward to that. I had to work.
Thank you, Mr. McInnis. Mr. Buckles?
Graduation was a true blessing. I mean, I was kind of tired by the time we got through with Palatka High, because it is a back-to-back-to-back-to-back thing, but I mean, it's, that is our special time of year to see the only, the really good product of what we try to do, and, you know, I've listened to, and the superintendent, I'm sure, has found out by now, that when you talk about graduation rates, and how they've, as the paper recently quoted, have skyrocketed in Putnam County, it is, it is not just finding those couple of people that are juniors and seniors in high school, it starts with those who are ready to learn. And this board has taken a strong stance behind with Lift Putnam to try to get more students into full-day pre-K. And if you don't have school readiness, if you don't have all the kids arriving at kindergarten at the same, pretty much up to speed and up to snuff, you can't catch them up. And that, that is why we've been through all the grief that we've endured with people complaining about, well, they, Lift Putnam did this, and the school board did that, and people want to make complaints and problems. When you're feeding 32,000 meals in the summertime, and you're having to add personnel to improve graduation rates and to do so many systemic changes, it starts there. You can't start... there. You can't start up here and patch it. It's a systemic change that Rick has grabbed a hold of, and I, like he, graduation rates were fifty percent, and Putnam County was dead last in the state of Florida when I was school superintendent. And when I started, I took over and had your same mission. And, but when I listen to the people talking bad about Putnam County and about, they don't understand that there's so much more than what you see that goes on behind the scenes. It starts, it really starts in the community with these early professionals. They're the ones that, like the superintendent said, need to find ways to get books in the hands of parents and people and do the things that are necessary to expose these younger children to learning environments that are conducive to bringing them along. I mean, all of us that have had children, our kids have been very successful and have come through Putnam County schools, but I go back and I think recently when, there's a website on social media that just really has kicked around Lift Putnam and what's been done, and when they got back their taxable status in just a few days recently, they haven't put a blip about that on, you know, because it was positive. But it is, this is a systemic problem, and it is something that, I mean, when you, once I, like I said again, when you can feed thirty-two thousand meals to kids in the summertime, you've got a problem. And that problem is indicative of the students that we teach. Can they learn? You bet they can learn, but they don't all learn in the same way on the same day. When you can watch the kids stand up at Crescent City High School whose parents cannot speak a lick of English, and they've started with us, and they are valedictorians or salutatorians, or they're entering the Marine Corps or going to the health fields, the jobs getting done by our teachers and our staff, and I'm so proud of them. And I don't think I need to say more because it, we're in a climate with our new Commissioner of Education and the political climate in America of more parental alternatives, like more charter schools and making it easier. Instead of making it competitive like the free market, they're going to start giving advantages to charter schools that are going to be above and beyond that which we have to be held to. So I just can't say enough for Rick and the instructional team. And it goes right down to the bus drivers and the people who put the wheels on the buses. It has to be a systemic, a systemic united front to get that accomplished. And I see what's going on, and I'm proud of what's going on. And I get some people, when I respond to them on Facebook, that get a little apologetic to me, but, you know, I can't stand to see somebody say our schools are bad. When you look at St. Johns County, who's an A-school district, and they're letting teachers go because they're overstaffed, or they've got too many, or they've got people at A-schools that aren't cutting the mustard, you know. It's not that they've got better teachers. They've got kids who are going to pre-K on a full day or even earlier. So it's kids that come from half-million-dollar homes, usually have access to more opportunities to learn and be challenged than kids who are worried about whether the meal that's in the refrigerator has been spoiled due to poor electricity or holes in the screens and insects infecting whatever they're doing at night. So it's a, it is a big, big problem, and it's something that we're beating and we're overcoming. And like Rick said, it doesn't matter who you're dealing with. I remember him saying that early on, and I'm thinking, buddy, you're saying a lot, but I mean, it is true. You've got to just say this is it, and this is what we're going to do. Because I love it here. Even our poorest kids and parents, they care when you, you know, when you, when you, when you know, when they know you're really trying. So I've whacked long enough, and I'll pass it on, so.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mrs. Pickens?
Well, I, again, I agree that the graduation ceremonies were really interesting and so much fun to watch kids and see all the good things. One thing that stuck out to me, I went to four here, and the one thing that stuck out that was very consistent and very observable was the fact that our principals knew the kids that walked across that stage. They spoke to them, they high-fived them, you know, they had pictures taken with each one of them. But my big thing is relationships. And our principals have cultivated relationships with our students. And I think that that makes our students want to perform. That's just, you know, my little soapbox. I also really appreciate the fact that Dr. Serency and his team have such a vision and really are keeping us up current and up to date and exploring opportunities that, you know, were not even heard of even a year ago. It's just amazing at how current we're staying with trends in education. And to the Placohai young professionals, I was out of town and didn't get to go to the Blue Crab, but we came up and watched the ski show. And, because I'd gotten back late Saturday night. And that was very entertaining and very unusual. You know, that was something totally different. And maybe the helicopter was just a small, little planning, but that helicopter was going. I mean, it just was a constant thing. So it was really great. And thank you for, that had to be an awesome moment when you decided, yes, we're going to do this. That had to be incredible. But you did a great job, and thank you. And then lastly, the band director at Crescent City High School is having a fundraiser, and her email said that it was going to quit on June 5th, but she's going to keep it going. This is to have instruments repaired. And she, it's just old clothes. They're getting paid twenty cents a pound, curtains, sheets, shoes. And she told me today she has enough to fill up a U-Haul trailer right now. Of course, you don't want to use all your profit up. So getting it to Orlando is a little bit of a problem right now that they're facing, but it's ongoing. And I am more than willing, because a lot of people don't get, thank you for that thunder.
Yes.
I hope it's all right.
It rained at my house before I left.
Maybe don't get to the South End that much, but I'm up here a lot. If you can contact even the district, somebody here at the district office, I'll be glad to be a delivery car to her in Crescent City. But she's not doing this for a fun trip for the kids. This is to get their instruments repaired and possibly maybe, you know, get new instruments. And so, anyway, any way, any way that you can help, and I'm certainly available to take stuff back and forth.
And that's all I have. Thank you, Mrs. Pickens.
By the way, let me add that when the helicopter stops, it'll fall out of the sky. But I had my first helicopter ride at the boat races years ago when I was a kid. That was neat. All right, go ahead.
Okay, ditto to everything I've heard regarding our graduation, the speeches memorable. I have a takeaway from every one of them. And I think it was Dr. Ball, most definitely, the small things, you know, the bad thing, the thumbs.
Oh, that was awesome.
Just awesome. And even the young people and the pride that they had as they delivered their speeches. So that was great. And kudos to Mrs. Faircloth. And you will give them the specifics on it, but I just wanted to mention that. And I also want to mention that I was in the credit union, I guess, last week. And I don't usually dip in other people's business when they're talking. They weren't talking to me, but they were talking about our district. And so when you talk about our school district, you're talking about me.
Amen.
And so they were saying the raises, and it's about time, et cetera, et cetera. And so I very politely started to keep my mouth closed, and something said, hey, you have some inside information you need to share with them. And I allowed them some of the things we had discussed, that, to how Rhonda had gone in and tweaked different things and made this happen, and how that one percent wasn't the end. We were looking at another two percent, et cetera. And I proceeded to tell them about the people that are now looking at Putnam County to move in our tax base. And when I finished, and I did it, I seasoned my words with grace, which is what the Bible asks us to do so you don't get hit in your mouth. And so they left smiling. They were pleased. And they said, oh, we didn't know that. And so, you know, and so those are things we need to do, especially when we hear someone that is spouting off information that we know is not necessarily the case. We can very casually share with them the great changes and the great things that are happening in Putnam County. And our newspaper keeps no secret of it. You posted ads, you did a spill on them, E.H. Miller, all of our schools. And our kids are proud when they see their pictures in the paper and someone else is concerned about them. So I'm just a proud Putnam.
County.
Countyan. I was going to say liver in Putnam County, but I'm from God's country. But anyway, you know, all right.
Everything is going well.
Oh, Mr. Attorney.
Everything's going well in the legal department.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Superintendent?
Let me, for the board members, say, everything better be going well in the league. I love to say that to Charlie, okay.
Got a quick, just a very short list. Let me just hit it real quick. First of all, Mr. Buckles mentioned Lift Putnam. I want to thank Lift Putnam. They actually sponsored our eighth-grade photos in the Placodaily News. So they were our sponsors. So.
Very nice.
And I thank Mr. Padgett personally for that. So we appreciate that. We also thank the PDN for putting a graduation section in there with all graduates' pictures.
Very nice.
We sponsor the center part of that. But thank you, and thank you, Mr. Leonard, for doing.
Yeah, they did.
John told me it was his idea.
That was all my idea.
Yeah.
That's all it was.
Well, thanks, John. Yeah. Let me clarify about Crescent City. We did recognize Kelly Jo Faircloth, the teacher of the JFG program, because they were one of two JFG programs in the state, Crescent City was, to reach or to exceed five of the criteria for the JFG classes. But I also want to point out, they couldn't do it alone. The teachers in that school have really, I'm talking about teachers and staff.
Embraced.
Have really stepped it up.
Yes.
And have really helped them achieve as are other high schools and JFG programs. So JFG has been an instrumental part in helping us move our graduation rates up. But again, it takes teachers in the classroom, and it takes the village and all the schools. So I want to point that out. Our product of Putnam ceremony will be at our next board meeting. I want to remind you that our next board meeting will be a night board meeting at 6:00 PM. And you approved that change, I believe, the last meeting because of some scheduling. But let me quickly just read these names, if you would, so I can enter them into the record. And we'll be having these folks come to the June 18th meeting. We'll present them with some recognition. And we did recognize them at all the high school graduations from where they graduated. Suzie Klein represents business, Karen Hughes, education, Dr. Patrick, Dr. Patrick Harris, health, Bodie Dwyer, manufacturing, DJ Johnson, public service, Chance Clay, agriculture, and Jarvis Melton, community service. So we, those were selected by the committee consisting of the Chamber of Commerce and the Placodaily News. And we appreciate their sponsorship and their involvement with that, but we will recognize them and read a little bit more information at the board meeting. Third thing is our board workshop today. We shared with the board our six superintendent goals and our strategies for achieving those goals. And I just want to point out that we have worked very hard, again, to include you, but to really make those goals come alive. And that's what drives our machine right now. So like I said earlier, our success is not by accident. We actually have a plan involved with your assistance to help move this district to the upper one half of districts in the state. And we're moving. So congratulations, board, for helping us with that. And our next step will be, we're going to have a leadership retreat with our leadership team, and we're actually going to meet in two weeks and actually put teeth into our plan for this coming year. So we have some very specific goals that we're going to be creating this year moving forward, and we'll keep you posted on that. And one of those goals, I want to finish on this. One of those goals, which Rhonda talked about today, was helping to recruit and maintain quality employees. And part of doing that is to reward them financially. Our employees have to make a living and have to make ends meet. And I'm very excited to say that you approved an across-the-board pay raise for all of our employees in the Putnam County School District. And I can't be more happier for that happening. And that was after our union approved, I think the teachers approved unanimously, and the classified approved with just ninety-nine percent, I believe. So.
It's been thirteen, fourteen years since they've had it.
My understanding was, I believe, Rhonda, you gave me that information. I think we gave a raise ten years ago to classified. Is that correct?
In two thousand, yeah, two thousand and seven, eight was the last across-the-board raise, and that was five point five percent. And then in that year that we're talking about, in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, classified had a one percent raise.
Right. So can you tell us, it's a one percent now for this current year.
They were retro back to July 1st.
Right.
They'll get a retro check, so they'll get the one percent raise for the whole fiscal year. And then beginning July 1st of 2019, with an additional two percent.
Right. So.
That's commendable, Rick.
Right.
That's three percent over the two-year period. I just, and it's been, that's ten, twelve, thirteen years. I don't know. It's long.
So that's just something to celebrate for our entire district, school board, and our teachers' union, and just working closely together, and our negotiation teams. So to finish up today, I'd just like to ask Mr. Bowlen, our chief negotiator, and Mark Motel, our president of the teachers' union, please come up and be recognized. And Madam Chair, if you could join me.
And then would you pick me up?
Want to just take their picture and just celebrate this moment?
Mark, thank you for all you do for the employees, too. That's great.
Do we act like we're about to go at it or?
Mark, do you have anything you want to say about that at all? Anything you want to add?
I'll just add that, you know, we've worked, it's been a long time for the employees.
Definitely.
And so, you know, I appreciate that the management team and the board want to do what they can. And I've told employees over the years, the last couple of years, this is not the board with the management team trying to hold back money. This is the legislature holding back money. So, you know, because we're all in this together. And some folks don't see that. And I say, you know, just remember who, when you go to the polls, you know, just, you know, vote for the people that support public education. And so that's where, you know, they've been a little kinder to us this year with the budget, so we will do something.
I will appreciate your leadership.
And I will say, the superintendent, Mr. Bowlen, and Ms. Odom, and what dialogue that I've had with them, they're already trying to find ways to go the next round. So they're hard at it. That's why I say everything's systemic. Nobody really knows what happened, but they're working every day to do that, okay?
And I want to thank Mr. Bowlen for his leadership. He's been in there, and he comes back and reports to us. And he's doing everything he can to make, you know, make it happen. So I want to congratulate both of you.
And we won't tell you everything he says.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Checks are in the mail, right?
Everyone else is.
Oh, yeah.
Red church.
One, two, three.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not the mail yet. July 16th is right there.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for coming down.
Thank you for asking, sir.
Great job.
And our next meeting has already been scheduled for six o'clock PM.
Yeah, don't forget that, David.
Okay, and you know that all that money will be spent, probably the bulk of it, here in Putnam County. So that's wonderful.
Yeah.
That's right. I'm supporting our local company.
You bet.
Okay, all right. Okay, if there is nothing else to come before the board?
I was waving at one of them. I was waving at one of my beautiful former students that grew up on me.
Nothing else. Again, we thank you, young professionals, for all you have begun to do. Well, you've always been doing it, but now it's out there and, and everybody is aware of it. And thank you, Mark, again, thank you for what you do, Putnam County, I mean, Placodaly News, and to the management team and our superintendent, we thank you.
Did I mention, maybe I did, because I repeat myself a lot, but thanks to the Placodaly News for printing. I think I already mentioned that printing all our senior pictures.
Yes, yes.
John told you to say it again, and say it slower and louder this time.
And boy, thank you for the excellent job you've done this school term. And we declare this board meeting officially adjourned.
Thank you.